I would like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, July 18th. If we please stand for the, for the, pledge allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I would just like to say I am thankful that we have the best weather on the planet right now. This is the only place to be. And then there's those crazy people that go to Death Valley to experience the 135-degree weather. Anyway, so enjoy this weather while we have it. Thank you very much. And roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Schickling?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ponte?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. Okay. Are there any announcements or written communication?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director Public Works. Got, let's see, four items here. This is the second week. We have a transition team at the wastewater treatment plant. PERC is now in the operator's seat. And so we've held with coordination meetings with their O&M staff, most of them are the same Montrose staff that got rehired by PERC, but they have new management out there. And then we have met with the chief plant operator this last week, and so all of that's going smoothly. And we're really looking for a renewed approach from this contractor, so we're seeing some new blood there, some new resources from the mainland to really get the job done for us. O&M is currently working on street markets and replacing signs. You see a good example of that's at the Vons intersection previous to the past few weeks. And then in the last few days here over the weekend, we did the intersection there through, the intersections there through the elbow at, which is known as Crescent, Pebbley Beach Road elbow there in front of the trailhead. And you can see what those high vis markings do, those ladder crosswalks. You can see them quite a distance away from just having the two bars across the road. That's why, community-wide, we're replacing all of those type of crosswalks.
And just on that, I like the fact that they're putting down the black paint first-
Yes.
-and then painting over, because, yeah, that looks much, much-
We listened there. We listened.
Yeah.
Looks better, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yes. And also, that's a process with new crew members going out there, and we're letting everybody lay it out and then also do the painting so that, you know, multiple people know that we have redundant resources to be able to do that. So Jeffrey's out there doing that. And so you see the improvements as we're doing that training. Also, we're working on patching and painting the serpentine wall. You see us progressively moving through there as we're able to do that even around the visitor time. Trying to keep that real condensed, but, you know, making an effort to get that done and bring those up to the level of service that we need for the community. And then the final funding for the five-corner project was approved by the California Transportation Commission. That's really good news. It's a bunch of money. It's like $3.2 million extra there. So staff was involved in a webinar this morning for getting the next steps on how to get that funding loaded down or up and programmed into the project so that we can start construction, because we're refreshing up that set of plans that we had where we were breaking it into two, where we had utilities, and then the road facilities on another set. Now it's all being combined all, and it'll be one effort when we go out to do that bid procurement and build it all at one time, coming up later this year.
Fantastic. And they were showing me the serpentine wall and how they're really almost peeling it off because it's got so many layers of-
Yes.
-paint and whatever over. So they're really doing a process that's gonna, it's gonna last a long, long time.
And, yes, and there's, we're putting the bonding agents, we're cleaning it, so we're making sure that we're getting in with the right agents to clean that salt that's, that's found its way deep into the concrete there, because that's stucco that's over some brick or block or rock. And then they're making sure that that loose stuff is removed, that spalling concrete. And then, once that's cleaned, they go in there and put bonding agent so it gets a better grip, and then they put that mortar on there, and then they put a primer, sealer, and then they put the paint.
Yeah, I know. They're doing a great job.
So, when you paint the wall, is it gonna be the original tan brown color?
So right now, on that wall, we're putting it tan brown, but then city manager's gonna pick a color probably more like the arch, because I always designate, you pick the colors.
Well, so- It's going the same color.
It's gonna be the same color that it is? Okay. And so I was curious about the sombrero fountain, which looks beautiful, by the way, but I'm hoping that that white is just primer?
It is the final color that we picked right now, but it is a paint color.
Oh, but it would look way better with the tan brown. I mean, that's fitting of the ambiance of town, don't you think?
So that's why I leave it to Dave. The highest level of the organization picks the paint colors.
Right.
Any questions?
It's, to me, it kinda ties in with the arch, so-
But the arch has always stood out because it's white, and the rest of it has always been tan. But you got the Hotel Belanca right there, which is white and black, and you got the zane gray, which is white and black. I'm just, I'm tired.
So, six months from now, look at it and say if it still bothers you, and talk to Dave, because that's usually what I say, it's paint, and we can change it, you know, if we change our mind. That's just like your house, right? You go paint the kitchen, "I hate that color," and then all of a sudden you change it.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bob.
Good evening, everyone. Orange Car Starfurn Harbor Master. Since our last report, Tuesday, June 20th, patrol moored 1,996 boats for a total of 7,109 nights. Patrol responded to seven medical calls, one fire call, did 140 public assists that ranged from wrap-ups to assistance towing, patrol assisted baywatch two times, the sheriffs five times, coast guard two times, and warned and advised 54 individuals of AMC violations. We also completed 212 security checks of the facilities and the surrounding waters. As a reminder, the harbor trash services are available daily to the boating public, and die tabbing operations continue daily. They're conducted with the officers going aboard and dining the vessels as they arrive. This coming weekend will be the Catalina ski race. There'll be approximately 45 teams with the water ski racers racing from Long Beach to Avalon on Saturday morning. They depart Long Beach around 9:00 a.m., and if they get an on-time start, they usually round the buoy here by the coast guard outside the casino anchorage at about 9:25 or around 9:30.
Wow.
And that's my report. Anything, any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city staff, city council. Michael Alguiria, Fire Chief. In June, we had a total of 164 total calls, which 137 were EMS, and only 27 fire-related fire alarms or anything under that besides a EMS call. Code was busy as well. They wrote over 400 citations. They've been super busy with animal calls, and they were a big help with the Fourth of July and the parade. And they've been doing a lot of following up with the online noise complaints or complaints coming in online.
Great. Yeah, they've all been busy. Any questions, the chief? No? Thank you.
Thanks.
Evening, Mayor, city council, city staff. Since our last council meeting, we had 342 calls for service. Of those, 204 of them were observations by the deputies, and 139 were calls for service from the public. We made a total of 14 arrests. There were eight for drunk and public, one for trespassing, one for domestic violence, one for indecent exposure, one for driving on a suspended license, one for invasion of privacy, and a felony vandalism arrest. On August 9th, we have arranged to have the Friends of Ponte Villa to come back to the island with the rods and rills for the local kids to get their, their rills. Next week, we're gonna go over, and the rods and rills, we're gonna go over and pick them up in Marina Del Rey, so I'd like to get the word out as much as we can and get those out there. I guess last year they had about 80, so we're hoping about the same amount this time again this year.
Wow, awesome.
Fourth of July went very well. We had six reserves that weren't regulars to the island, and they were very proactive, and it worked out well. Crime was extremely low on the Fourth, which was a relief, because that weekend was extremely busy, but they were very active, and it seemed to work well.
Good. Right. Any questions?
Yeah, I know that you did the experiment with the railings and the cones and stuff to funnel the traffic and-
Yes, ma'am.
...all of that stuff, which was pretty good, but then businesses were concerned about people not going their way and all that stuff. I was just wondering, in the summertime, I know you have extra people on, is it possible on a cruise ship day or something like that just to have somebody directing traffic at, like, Coney Island and at the Donut Shop, those two major intersections where people just kinda, huh, huh, you know?
We don't actually have that many extra personnel during the summer. We do typically hire people for four to six hours of overtime during peak days, but in order to get that many personnel out there to handle street corners, it'd be kinda difficult. We'd have to get a lot more overtime for that. It would just be hard to do it. But we do send out, typically, when it gets busy, one of us will go out there for a few hours and kind of adjust traffic best we can. But the problem is, I was out there today, as well as Grayson was out there today, and also one of my other deputies was out there at different times, and even though I'm out there giving somebody a citation for, for crossing in front of cars, as I'm doing that, there's 10 other people that are doing it at the same time. It's just extremely difficult to get everybody to hold back without some kind of a barrier there. It's, even when we're there, people just walk right out, because unfortunately, it's treated more like an amusement park than a, than a street corner.
Right. I know.
That's the problem that we have.
Right. So I was just thinking that there's usually a police car, like, right there by the, the boards and stuff in the rack, so I just thought, well, maybe it'd be double duty if, if somebody was standing there and just going, okay, stop, okay, go, and then you can have eyes on Crescent.
Yeah, and that's one place that we actually did like putting our car during cruise day, cruise ship days. It's just that, you know, we've had some disagreement with, you know, some of the people in the city didn't like it there, so we did, we are moving it now, so it's not always there. That's kind of a spot where we did like it to try to be a visual, you know, direction for people to kind of realize that, look, the police are here, maybe we shouldn't be crossing. But to be perfectly honest with you, people tend not to, to care. California law has, has changed where it used to be an actual infraction to cross a street outside of a crosswalk, and that's no longer the law in California. Now in California, it's you have to fail, failure to yield in front of a car. So if a car's coming and you step into the street, that's makes the violation. It's no longer the crosswalk, which it used to be. So, and I think a lot of the public knows that or just don't, don't care, because the numbers that are crossing is, is shockingly huge numbers.
Right.
Weird out there today, and I literally was, you know, writing a citation, and people were walking, and I'm yelling, hey, you know, and it's, it's surprising that, how hard it is to really control those crowds from crossing there.
Right.
I think it is confusing as well. I mean, people don't really know that, you know, there's crosswalk, if they walk a little further this way or that way, they don't see it, so they're just going beelining it to either the golf cart rental or one of the businesses on that, on that corner.
Right. So maybe we need to make our, our really pretty little crosswalks that are the bricks and the rocks and stuff, maybe we just need to make those more identifiable as a crosswalk. As nice as the idea was of, oh, this is beautiful, look at this, you know, people just don't get it. So.
I, what was, how did things turn out with, with the test? It, it did open up for traffic to flow, right?
Traffic flowed a lot better, and there were much less people. There were a few people that were still going around and, and basically following the curb line there, they'd go around the fence, but for the most part, in my opinion, I mean, I haven't done a study, and, you know, I did it for one day, basically, but the number of people in the street was, was far less.
And it was, it was, it wasn't a done thing? It was a trial, see, let's see what happens here?
Yeah, that's all it was.
I mean, it's still stuff that we have to look at and come up with a final idea.
Right.
But it was, you know, it was just to give it, let's give this a try.
Right.
And I've talked to people who have, who traversed that area, who were so excited-
In their cars.
-that they could get through without-
In their cars?
Yeah.
In their cars.
Without having to get backed up and waiting for people as they continually cross from any angle into that intersection.
And then a new thing that I've noticed recently is that people wanna bypass the walkway and go on the street side of the courts and stuff, and now they're walking four or five abreast on the street side of the basketball and volleyball courts? And it's like-
Well, that, that happens when you run out of sidewalk.
Or if they can't figure out how to get back into the pedestrian area, because there's a wall there.
But Bob Greenlaw was gonna say, but that's gonna all be fixed.
So the feedback I got, I was, I was, I was fine with the area, and then was talking with some of the business owners across the street, and one of the business owners let me know that on the same cruise ship day previous, her sales were 40% higher. I can't attribute all of that to people not being able to access across the street, but that's a pretty massive drop for similar, similar weeks, similar weather for the most part. It was definitely warmer on this day, so I think also a lot of people were at the beach, which can affect the number of sales that happen in a day. The active transportation plan on page 75 has a map that's laid out that has a crosswalk from that area and limits it down so that there is a barrier and then an access point. And I think that was a smart decision made, because you would need to have people be able to flow out of the golf carts and out of the Jeep areas into the street, and if they get stuck there and can't get back over to the pedestrian side, granted that the sidewalk is gonna widen because the parking won't be there anymore, so that's gonna make it bigger, which is good, but it's still gonna narrow at that point, and then now you've got people that can't get back over that wall to the pedestrian side from that side. So that's part of why I thought that crosswalk was actually a good idea. I don't know if we need to make it narrower so that it bottles it into that, or if that's gonna mess up flow because it's narrow. Like, there's a lot of things in that area that need to get looked at.
Absolutely. And I, you know, what we did last Tuesday was, was, or, sorry, Wednesday, wasn't an end-all, be-all. We were trying to make a final solution. We wanted to really see if we could actually make the place safer and make traffic a little better.
Yeah.
And it, I think that proved the fact that that can be done. I mean, there may be some things that can be changed, and obviously, there could be things that are more visually, you know, appealing, you know? Aesthetically, that was not fantastic to look at.
The cones were an added bonus. I love the orange.
But, you know, we-
It was a good test. It was a good test to show.
Yeah. And the feedback that we're getting is fantastic.
Yeah.
And truth be told, I mean, when it comes to the businesses, I, I, everybody wants them to succeed. I understand that. But if, if their business is based on people, you know, walking in traffic, it, that's, I don't understand, that's a bunch of an argument, you know, in my opinion.
Yeah. I think the other thing to look at also, though, is that it's an active transportation plan that's meant to increase safety for pedestrians, which it does keep them safe as long as they're on that side of the fencing. That makes sense to your, your comment about being three or four or five wide by the basketball courts and by the, that street is an issue. I don't know how we solve that. I don't know if it makes sense to look at having a space that is, like, if we actually move the wall back and put a sidewalk there, so there's a designated space-to-be that makes it still wide enough to access, but narrows the part on the opposite side of the wall and brings it in a little bit, maybe that's the solution. I think you're gonna end up with that problem otherwise. And it's not like other cities and places don't have sidewalks next to streets. It's not like that wall is gonna be the end-all, be-all that's gonna make people stay on that out of the street. They've been used to being in the street for decades over here. They do treat it like Disneyland.
We can paint big signs that say sidewalk with an arrow.
Yeah, they don't read signs.
Well, could we put signs, though, with the code number of, you know, blocking in front of the carts?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I, I would love more signs in the city. That's something that we-
At least for, if they do get a ticket, you know, you let them know it's, it's right there. We let you know.
Yeah.
Because I haven't seen any, I think it would be, I'm sure during vacation, they probably may not see any.
Something that we truly want. There's a bunch of, of signs that we would love to have. That way, when we're on Front Street and we're telling people to, to walk their bikes or to, you know, throw the alcohol away, we can simply say, hey, a sign's posted right there.
But, but they're not supposed to walk their bike on Front Street? The bike isn't allowed on Front Street. But those signs, those signs at the end of the streets, nobody lis, nobody reads, nobody sees, they just-
Yeah. I think the signage needs to be improved. I, we, I think we all agree with that. It's, it's not very evident of what should be up there, and unfortunately, people don't, you know, they're at Disneyland like girls.
Saturday afternoon, it was fun watching the golf carts come down Sumner, or, Sumner, and make a right down, and instead of turning around as we're telling them, no-
There's no regular queue.
They drove over, all the way over to Sum, well, they drove all the way over to Clarissa.
I think we've talked about this before. There's no regular queues. We're trying to make it more pedestrian-friendly, which is ideal, but there's no curb that stops them. There's, and for safety's sake, there shouldn't be, so you can traverse that space and come down into the public space. It makes sense.
100% agree with you.
But there's nothing that stops them, right?
The problem is with not having that curb there.
Right. They have no clue.
Two pillars, not, not three pillars.
And it's wide and, there was, yeah, exactly.
I'm just gonna keep driving. It's, it's a, it's a very common issue that we have.
Right. Yeah. It's, and it's the same thing with not having things that people who are visiting are used to seeing. They're used to seeing crosswalks that have walk signs. They're used to seeing streetlights. We don't have any of that, which I totally get, understand, and appreciate, but also that's why they're not paying attention.
Right.
The people that do follow the rules of the road are paying, would pay attention if it was there, but that's not everybody also.
They don't have signs and everything at Disneyland, so that's why.
Yeah, because it's not a regular place.
So that's why-
If we could just show them a video when they got on the boat that says, this is a regular place. You will get a ticket. Have a nice day.
All right. Well, sorry to open a can of worms, you know.
No, it's a good, it's a discussion that's gonna be had at some point.
Yeah, I was just curious if a person-
But I, I thank you for the, the try. That was, that was nice.
Oh, on the tries, if we could just also notify people in the area ahead of time that it's a try or a test, that I think would go a long way in also avoiding the feedback that we, I, I don't know if anybody else got the same level of feedback that I did, but people were gonna start petitions and all sorts of fun stuff, and I was like, let's have a conversation first, so don't start a petition, just, there's a phone number. You can call and ask us, any one of us, anyone at the city, anyone at the Sheriff's Department, like, we'd be happy to answer and talk and discuss.
We're willing to, you know, have town hall meetings and coffee with the cop and talk about, or with everybody, and then, actually, it would be fantastic for us, because we can get more people involved-
Absolutely.
-and really get ins and outs, because with everything, you're gonna have some pushback.
Yeah, always.
It's a guarantee. There's no way around it, but, you know, it's better to hear from the, you know, the bulk majority than, than the few people.
Than the room of mill.
So, that's just the reality.
So that's still under study and whatever?
Exactly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Matt Baker. Well, I'm never excited to say down. That is an improvement from February, March, and April, and also an improvement on the estimates used for developing the budget. We had them down about 25%, which is what April, March, and February saw. So that's a positive variance of 100,000 from where we saw, where we thought we would be for May. You know, still early, too early to really tell June. Nightly moorings, though, for the month of May were down 8%. Nightly moorings for the month of June were down 4%. While it's not always a perfect correlation, I think it's a positive sign that, you know, while it might not match the highs we saw in '22, I think there's a good reason to think June's numbers will be closer to May's than, say, February to April. So that's definitely positive from a reserve status heading into the next year. We might be 100 or 200,000 higher than what we thought we'd be heading in. Other than that, I have auditors onsite next week, so if you see some new faces in finance, that's probably who they are, so I'm on the kind of audit side of the fiscal year for me. And then also, if you see a new face or two in finance, we had a budgeted senior account position that I elected to fill with an account technician. So, Affilia Peguero started this week, and one of my goals with having now the full department or the four in the department is to use that extra manpower to do more in the area of rental compliance with short-term vacation rentals. So we're still kind of dividing up responsibilities and roles as we have some new faces in the department, but that's definitely an area of focus for, for my department for the next year. Unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
We're good. Thank you.
Good evening, or good day, Council, Mayor. It is summer, and I wanna kind of report on some of the summer activities that we've already had, so you can see, I feel like, the success of my department right now. And I feel like the best way to see what the community service is doing is through pictures, because we're very active within the community. And the first one we'll have is our summer events is the Fourth of July.
Was Nick Merle your photographer?
He was.
Yeah. Great.
So, Fourth of July with the USC band. This year, I feel like we got our money's worth with them. They had the concert on the third. I mean, it was so big, they actually, if you look in the lower left corner, they had to bring in a big-time conductor right there to be part of it. And also, they played in our parade. Their concert on the third was about an hour and 10, almost hour and 15 minutes, so longer concert than usual. Then they did pocket concerts all through town after the parade. They went from restaurant to restaurant. If you were open, they showed up and they, you know, did a little gig, they shook the green pier up, and then they came back to the stage prior before the fireworks, and they did their Trojans After Dark concert, which was quite excellent. And then after the fireworks, they came back and did about two or three more songs to kind of end our night.
Nice.
I loved it. I thought it was way more inclusive than, you know, to, to the entire community instead of the select few that could afford to go up in the casino. So, my vote is to do that again and again and again.
Jake, the conductor, was all for it. He loved it. The band loved going around and just showing up and surprising people, and the decorations this year, I thought, were done great. Big, big shout-out to Jenny Diaz in our department for art installations, Public Works as well in putting up the decorations this year. We had a local blues artist who sang the National Anthem, Roger Conley. CRNR was out and about, providing information. We put him in very specific areas so they can get the most traffic, to be able to teach people about making Avalon and Catalina a more sustainable future. Tony Zeiler was great as our grand marshals, and the community was great at chanting back to him his, his idea, saying. And if we would've got the shirts a little bit earlier, I think we would've sold out. We sold enough shirts to at least make the money back, but you still see the shirts walking around downtown, so next year, we'll get on that. I have a, I have a pretty good idea of, of a shirt we're gonna do off of the USC. Our bands this year, we had our, we're all local, undercover Grupo Proyecto in the Solanos, and if you look downtown, the whole entire day, people were down there dancing and just having a great time. I do apologize, I did allow the Solanos to play till about 10:30, breaking our own code ordinance, but the locals downtown kept yelling for an encore and... Thank all the businesses and private donors who helped offset the cost of the Fourth of July, and also, there's so many of them that we can't call out everybody individually, but we do want... Without it, we can't have it as spectacular as we've had it the last couple of years. And now, going into some of our new summer events. Our new summer events, we wanted to make sure that we had fun, very fun-filled activities for our locals as well as visiting communities, and we also wanted to make sure that they were consistent and weekly, so whoever was coming to the island, they knew if they came on Wednesday, they're going to see a movie at, movies at the beach. So going, our first one is Beach Days that we do on Mondays. You can see before, kind of empty, and even the sun didn't even come out for it, it looks like. But now, what we've done is we've increased participation by having more interactive staff out there, trying to encourage people to play the games. We have about four or five different games that they can be a part of and play. We take about maybe a quarter of that beach up, but people, people are coming in and being active in there. You see to the right there, we have those bean bags. People love those things. The minute we put them out, they're, they're laying out in them and having a good time, and we allow them to take them wherever they want, as long as they bring them back. And you can see, we also do these kayak tours. We'd like to thank Joe's Rent a Boat for allowing us to go and use five to six of them at a time, and we take them out on half-hour to hour kayak tours for free. So, we, we'd like to thank the Yacht Club for being one of the major sponsors, for allowing us to be able to do this much on the Beach Days. On, actually, I have to go back to another one. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have our traditional Beach Bingo. It's the original summer event. It's a dollar card, and all proceeds of that money goes towards funding these other summer events. So, we thank everybody who comes out to play Beach Bingo, and we thank everybody who donates our local businesses the prizes for Beach Bingo. They rotate, we, they rotate every Tuesday, Thursday, the prizes do, because we have so many generous business owners, owners in this town who, who give to that. And we usually make around four, anywhere from four to five thousand dollars a year off of this, and that, and that does, that goes a long way in our department to be able to fund the other programs. Wednesday mornings, we have the Fishing Derby. And the Fishing Derby, this one has grown tremendously, and a big part of that is the, the private, private-public partnership with Austin Henry Avalon Smart Homes, who's really pumped this up. As you can see in the, in the center picture, we get about forty to fifty kids every Wednesday morning at 7:00 AM participating in this event. All ages, all genders, and you see in the bottom-left corner there, that's where he sets out every morning. There's all free food, free drinks for everybody when parents are showing up, and, and they're also free bait for every kid. If a kid doesn't have a rod or, or a drop line, he gives them a rod or a drop line to use. He's allowed, first-place winners are winning either tackle boxes or, or fishing rods or, I don't know what those, the reels, the reels that go on fishing rods. And so he's, I'm not a fisherman, but the kids just seem to really love it. The parents are, I'm getting huge compliments for it, but it's really, it's really not me. It's the two, the two people, Giselle and Sol, who are working with Austin, that really make this event really big. And so, we appreciate him for really pumping that up. And then also, on Fridays, oh, excuse me, Wednesdays, we have Movies on the Beach. And you can see before 2014, the movies were kind of in a small little portion of South Beach with that little screen, and a couple of years ago, we bought the big one, so if you look to your right, you see the big one's twenty-foot-tall screen, and we had to move it sideways, but we weren't getting a big turnout for the movies, and I don't know why they weren't quite as big, but what we did this year is we took those bean bags, brought those out. We had some leftover sofas from the old teen center. We throw those out. We're, we're selling candy. Where we've got, as you can see in that top-right corner, you can see where we have a, it's an interactive photo booth. So when, so we hired somebody out, and she's coming out three, for three of the movies, but she loves it so much, she's been showing, just showing up and giving free as well. And so this is a free activity. People can come in, they take pictures with items that might be in the movie, and so they go, they go home as part with that. And then we also do, we've selected about four movies this year, where we're doing interactive bags. Kind of think of like Rocky Horror Picture Show, but on a smaller scale. So, you know, inside the bags are all the, might be items from the movies, so when they come out, and like, there was a part where, you know, they have bubbles that are coming out. In Wally, he has a pet cockroach, so everyone got to take home a pet cockroach. A lot of fun. And for that one, I really want to thank the Lions Club and Yacht Club, because they sponsor it. Yacht, Lions Club usually sponsors through Choices. They usually give about three thousand dollars every year, and Choices would, would host this, but Choices doesn't exist anymore, so Lions Club has now given us that money towards the movies, but that pays for usually, you know, six of the weeks, so we're missing about five to other, six other weeks, and so to make it consistent, Yacht Club has filled that delta and has, has sponsored the other movies, as well as these little, these little interactive bags. So thanks Lions Club and Yacht Club for that. Fridays is Fitness Fridays. Now, Fitness Fridays is kind of in a, it's been a little bit of a struggle. We're trying to, with it, we're trying to create a culture of fitness, and maybe this is something that we can start to build into the fall, winter, and spring, and into classes for our local community, but we're just kind of trying it out now. We were doing it in the park, because we had the fitness equipment in the park, but no one seems to be coming all the way up there for, for the fitness portion, and so the turnout's been low for that one, so we're gonna move that to Front Street, and we're gonna move that to the stage, nine AM in the morning, Sundays, and then we'll do some fitness on the actual beach, down by the water, as long as the wa, as long as the water isn't high tide. We'll do, we'll do it down there, so we don't take up beach, beachfront where people are laying out. But we're looking at doing Zumba on the stage, we're gonna do Calisthenics on the beach, and we, and these are all local instructors. They're, they're kids who are off the zip line, they're, they're really good shape, they're really enthusiastic. We just gotta make sure we bring people out for it. We've been advertising now in the hotels and putting flyers and brochures in the hotels, inviting people to come out for this Fitness Friday. And every one of these instructors are doing it on their own time, just to try to build this culture of fitness, so I'd like to thank the instructors for doing that.
Right.
Then we have Saturday's Art in the Park, and this one has been a huge, huge hit. It's probably our biggest event that we do that's attended by our locals outside of Movies on the Beach, but we get a ton of locals who come weekly. I, I hear them talking about it, and so I'm really proud of this one. We have, we have local, we have local artists who come and they, they participate in teaching kids different art projects, as well as, you know, they, they do the tattoos for the kids, the face painting for the kids, and we've had a couple, we have a guy from over town who's been coming over, and he's doing character, kind of character art, and people seem to love that as well. There's always a long line for that. So we're really excited about Art in the Park. It's been a huge, huge success.
And when, when is that one?
That's Saturdays from, from eleven to three o'clock.
Eleven to three.
In Avalon Kids Park.
Yeah, nice.
And then we have on Sundays our Yoga and Sound Healing down on South Beach. It started off pretty slow with about five people, but it's grown now to where we have twenty-five people coming to yoga on the, yoga at South Beach, and a lot of them, we've now got about six or seven that are consistent, consistently coming, and then the rest just hear about it, or locals who are getting up from their breakfast and they're walking down there, 'cause it's at eight AM in the morning, and they see it and they just run over and just start jumping into the yoga class, 'cause it's, it's another free, fun activity. So that's, like I said, that one has, the largest has been twenty-five people that we've had for that. So for the summer activities, I feel like it's reaching everything that I hope, I hope it would be, and, and developing and building those in the future. We love to keep yoga going, love to keep the Art in the Park going, stuff like that throughout the, throughout the fall and maybe spring. Winter might be tough, but fall and spring would be great.
That's great.
And then we have our Summer Day Camp. Summer Day Camp started off a little slow, because they had a, you know, we, we've been kind of competing with the, the free one up at the school, but now we're averaging about twenty-five to thirty kids every day. They've been doing arts and crafts, science experiments, excursions to the interior, the museum, and other activities that they have with the island company. Our, our new instructors this year, they're young, they're excited, they're, they're engaging with the kids, and so I'm really proud of our, our young staff for really making this a huge success, and I think that without, without a staff that's energetic like that, camps like this, they don't make it, and so I'm really appreciative of them. And then, on that note, no one does it alone. And this is my staff this year, and, I mean, I'm, I'm one person, I might have an idea, maybe, you know, help to set things up, but without the energy of this staff, none of it's successful. My staff, Marissa Marone, Jenny Diaz, Giselle Alvarez, Sol Vine, Sofia Navarro, Lily Campbell, Marissa Riley, and Francisco Romo have been outstanding this year, and so I want to make sure that they get the recognition they deserve, because I can't do my job without them, so... Is there any questions?
No.
No, my teeth hurt. I've just been smiling the whole time.
Yeah, great summer. Great summer. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
They were phenomenal, and I was gonna mention this for all the departments, between seeing sheriffs and fire at the beginning, Public Works throughout, your crew afterwards especially, phenomenal for the Fourth of July especially and for the parade. The amount of work and effort that all of you guys put into that was fantastic. One of the girls actually asked me, "Come back and help us sweep," because they were sweeping afterwards, and I was like, "If you have another broom," and she's like, "I don't," and I'm like, "Next year, bring another broom. I'll go." So anyway, sign me up for another broom next year. But they were doing awesome, so please tell them thank you all. They, they did great.
Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two updates this evening. First one, we had Justice Ramming update our recycling, city recycling videos to add the SB 1383 organics component. In addition, we translated the video into Spanish, and Councilmember De La Rosa did a fantastic job.
Oh, great.
So I just want to give a shout-out to her and Justice. They're posted online now, so cityofavalon.com/arr. If you want to check them out, we'll start pushing it out on our socials, so that's really, really great. And then, the first week in August, we'll be interviewing six candidates for Public Works Director. So we received a total of over thirty applicants, and so we're super excited for those interviews coming up in August.
And we're using Channel Three with the Justice Ramming thing still?
I will, I'll follow up with that.
Because that goes into the hotels as well, so it's, it's kind of not, not helpful.
That one goes into Vons as well, right?
Hopefully.
Okay. Yeah, I'll definitely.
Yeah. And anything on CalRecycle? With actually the redemption that we were looking at CRV, is there any progress, or is that dead, or where's that?
Cal, CalRecycle checked in with us this week, and we should, they said that we should have an answer for, from them, either late this week or early next week.
Because that would still really, really help. Yeah. It's just so disheartening to see how people don't know how to separate a plastic bottle or an aluminum can from a whatever, so the more we could have the public pick up and make, give money for, it might help with all of that also.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Good. Any questions with Jocelyn? City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Residents, a couple things, just want to let people know that Assemblyman Josh Lowenthal's Field Rep Clayton Hurd is gonna be on island. They're holding mobile office hours for the Assemblyman. It's gonna be at the library on thir, this Thursday, July 20th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, no appointment needed. Clayton will be down there, among other things. He's available to talk to you about Department of Motor Vehicles issues, foreclosure prevention programs, consumer complaints, veteran benefits, anything else that's down there. So please, you know, take advantage of Clayton being here. It's great that Assemblymember Lowenthal is sending his staff out here, and hopefully this can be a regular item on their agenda for us. Like everyone else, I want to thank our staff, Dave Hart and his team. This is all for the Fourth of July. I thought the Fourth of July was, was terrific. There's so much work goes into that before, during, and after that event from Dave Hart and his staff, Public Works, Jamie and Jeffrey, leading that up before, during, and after. The Harbor Department all day long, you know, was busy with everything they had going on, the Fire Department, code enforcement, and I do just want to mention, I know Dave said there's too many to mention, but I do want to mention Martin Curtin and Curtin Maritime for the barge and everything that they give back to the city. That's tremendous. I think people need to know that, that, that everything they do is, is really comes back to the city in other forms, so we certainly appreciate that. The only negative we have, again, with the water balloons.
Yep.
Not gonna dwell on it. We're gonna try to come up with some options, maybe to present to Council in the coming months prior to next year, maybe what we can do when we're working with Sheriff's Department and to have some conversations on that. It's something that probably has gone by the wayside of good natured, and it's gotten a little out of hand. So, we do recognize it for those folks that have mentioned it, and we're gonna address it. Tomorrow night's Planning Commission meeting, just want to bring everybody's attention that Sagecrest, our consultant, is here. They'll be presenting options and leading a discussion regarding short-term rental options that we can make to our current legislation, our current enforcement. Anything's on the table. We wanna, we wanna have that discussion with Planning Commission over their next several meetings to get their, their input, and then the goal would be to get some sort of consensus to bring to Council. We'll narrow it down and bring it to Council for, to see what direction you'd like to go. I think there's a number of things that all work together that make sense for us, but we definitely recognize we have to address it. Just briefly, I want to mention, you know, there's, we, we have been talking all this year, really for the past twelve months, with CRNR and about recycling, and making sure that we're doing the proper thing to get things off the island. I just want to mention that Jocelyn and I have made, the last couple barge trips, we've gone down to Avalon Freight and climbed up the side of dumpsters and taken pictures of what's inside those and what's leaving, and I can assure you, there is, on average, fourteen full dumpsters leaving the island every time they send things over with everything you can imagine it, but we're also monitoring how much recycling. And the recycling before Fourth of July and after Fourth of July was basically a fourfold increase after, but we can do better, you know, and we're working with CRNR on that, on those efforts. But I did want to, you know, let Council and the residents know, we are putting our eyes on those things to make sure that it's making a difference in this, the garbage and recyclables are leaving the island. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Is Scott on?
Yes.
Scott, do you have anything to...
Yes, I am. I have no report. I will be in the city the second meeting in August, and we're gonna have some heavy legal discussions in August on some, a number of items. So be prepared.
Okay. We like that. Okay, Councilmember report.
I'll go first, because there's just one thing. Bob, I forgot to ask you about this. Estimated time of the start for the ADA cutouts?
So you remember that council agenda item where we just moved all the money over, and so we're finalizing with the bid documents with them? That was our last step, so that we're doing that this last week, and so we should receive a response that we'd be ready to go out for a fresh bid on that, and then we have...
I was talking about the ADA, the sidewalk.
Yeah, the ADA ramp.
So we're gonna send them out? I thought we had already...
So the ADA ramps, so that was, we put all the money together, so just go to the short story. The short story is after Labor Day, after the visitor's gone, that's when we anticipate doing it.
It's just, it's just that on the corner that I work on and look out windows, it's just really disheartening to see handicapped people get to the corner.
Yeah, and I understand.
Especially if they're in a mobile wheelchair. You would think you could navigate that well, but to have to turn around and go back. I just sit there, and it's, it's just, it, it hurts my heart when I see that. It's just that they can't navigate and continue on.
So coming your way soon. Okay. After the visitors are, for the most part, gone after Labor Day.
Okay.
No.
And then we would be in that whole corridor of Third, not just that one.
Okay.
All of those, so it'd be great, the final product, okay? Thanks for the question.
Oh, go ahead. I slowed down right now, which is a nice little break, I'm enjoying my kids for the July, but I did want to ask Dave if you could reach out to Clayton, see if you can have someone, a Spanish-speaking person to come with him for his visit. I already had people reach out, and they're all Spanish-speaking. I don't want to put him in a tough position, so just to make sure he's prepared for that. But I did want to say for anyone that does need translation, Tessa does have someone that comes over from Tarzana on Wednesdays, and they're in the teen center eleven-thirty in the morning and through fifteen, but they only focus on Medi-Cal. But I mean, usually that's one of the main priorities for people, so if they need any translation, please visit them. But hopefully we can get someone to come on Thursday as well. But hopefully we can get someone to come on Thursday as well. Thank you.
Well, okay, so let's see. I've been on council now for a year and I'm getting kind of used to it and I'm getting kind of mouthy, so bear with me. Anyway, and I'm still just me. I would also like to shout out for the Fourth of July. I thought it was awesome. I love the decorations and stuff that they came up with, the floaties all tied together. I thought was awesome. And I'd also like to express my gratitude for having a Mexican band up there, represent the community, inclusive of the community. I absolutely loved every single part of the Fourth of July. It really, really was a good job, so thank you very much. I'm following up on the dialysis town hall that we had. So I had a lot of people that weren't happy with some of the responses and they asked me to dig a little deeper. So I did contact Davida, who is one of the largest dialysis clinics in the country. And they actually got back to me. And we had a meeting today with City Manager and the Mayor and myself, and Jason was on the call as well, Jason Perre from the hospital. So that was actually a very interesting call. They did not seem completely discouraged. They did say that for those that are hesitant for home dialysis, that there have been major strides made in the home dialysis arena and that people are feeling a lot better on the home dialysis and the risk of infection is not as great as people seem to be afraid of. But they also felt that they're going to look in their teams and see if there's some way that they can partner, because they also partner with UCI. And so Jason and them were going to be going back and forth, but I asked to be kept in the loop just because I am honest and true to my community that has asked me to look into this. So there's an update on that. So that's pretty good. And then I'm extremely encouraged about the discussion that's going to be happening tomorrow regarding short-term rentals. Because, you know, there's a lot of banter on Facebook and everybody likes to complain and everybody's like, "Oh, it's been going on for twenty years and it's not going to change." But it's going to change. I think originally people kind of, it was the attitude of "not in my backyard" kind of thing, because it was kind of small. But now it kind of feels like a virus that has creeped into this town and taken over and it's at critical mass. And we need to do something now. So I'm extremely encouraged by that. I believe that the whole dais up here, we're all of like mind that there is a problem and we are gonna, this council is going to be the one to tackle it and, you know, make a good succinct ordinance. So I encourage everyone to either tune into the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow, come in person, voice your opinions, your concerns, whatever, and then keep coming. And feel free, email me, mschickling@cityofavalon.com, you know, any of your ideas, any of that. Because I think between this entire community, there's a lot of really good, smart people here and we want to keep you all here. So I think we, all working together, we can come up with a solution that is equitable for the homeowners as well as the residents of this town. Thank you.
Just wanted to start out actually by thanking, since it's been a while since we've all met, thanking Love Catalina for the Pride Event at the end of June. It was a phenomenal event. It was really fun to attend in the morning and get to be around with everyone. And it was really enjoyable to be at home in the evening and watch everyone on Facebook dancing downtown. I don't know if anyone enjoyed that as much as I did, but man, there are some good videos of some good dancing going on. The DJs were a lot of fun and that was fantastic to see. So thank you to Jim and his team who were out there and to the elected officials that came and attended that event as well. That morning, I did have the opportunity to meet with Jennifer Lamarc from Supervisor Han's office and take her and another person from that office around town and just get to meet with them for a few minutes before the day got started. And so, you know, we are going to for sure miss Herlinda Chico and are wishing her all the best of luck on her upcoming election. But I'm really excited to work with Jennifer and see how she can help us keep going with a lot of the projects that we're working on from the county. And then ended up going to a number of update and informational meetings regarding broadband, some similar information, some I've asked to reach out to Scott regarding the potential for a public-private partnership and looking at that avenue as a potential solution for some of the things that are still causing concern. And I'm also just open, I know Michael had talked about something from, from your neck of the woods for, it's not Skag and it's not the cog, it's something else that I'm--
CalCities.
Thank you. Yeah, Policy Committee. So anyway, still actively working on that, still actively working with a number of entities, some who are still moving forward in grant searches for funds and some who are kind of coming to the end of the road, they think, on what is possible. So we're just going to keep going. We're going to make it happen. And then Fourth of July, as I said, was phenomenal. Thank you guys so much for that. I do have Gateway Cities coming up the first week of August after our next council meeting. And then between now and then, there's a couple of other broadband meetings that are coming up that I'll be attending. And I feel like there's something else as well that I forget, but I'll see if I can remember it. And then just also a shout out of thanks to the Love Catalina team for the fundraising with Fourth of July. They also do some fundraising efforts to vacation rental owners, to mooring owners, and to the community and members at large to help with paying for some of those things. So just was thankful for that as well. Oh, met with two consultants from Visit California for, they're doing a study on tourism regions and how Visit California can support each of those regions. And because Avalon is part of the LA region, they were trying over the phone previously to prove that we were not the same, that we were very different from the LA region in general for a number of reasons. So actually went on a tour with Jim from Love Catalina and talked through some of the needs, concerns, abilities, positives that we have, opportunities both that we have currently and what we have to grow on. And so it was just the first discussion of, I think, probably a couple. But had one person from up in Sacramento and one from the East Coast, and both of them were like, "We've never been here before. This is freaking amazing. Thank you so much." So they fell in love with the town and, yeah. Otherwise, I think that's it.
Great. Okay.
Shout out to Love Catalina for the exceptional music company, the first concert. Oh, my God, it was so fun. I was dancing my butt off.
It was a beautiful night.
It was.
And also, on the Fourth of July, the fireworks were incredible. And they love the fact that about twenty minutes later, there was that other blast. It was like, when's the end going to be? Anyway, it was very good. So hopefully, I'm sure you've expressed how wonderful it was for us. And just, just for the council, the Grand Jury has finished their annual report and you can get it at www.grandjury.co.la.ca.us.
Is it in the book this year?
Nope. It's all downloaded. All, I don't know how many pages it's--
It's a big book, yeah.
Yeah. So anyway. No, y'all covered it really well and we're going to move on to oral communications. This is an opportunity for people in the audience to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken. Come on up.
Okay. I just found out about the Planning Commission when I got off the boat this afternoon, so bear with me. I don't know if I'm going to be able to be there tomorrow night, so I'm just going to save my two cents worth right now.
Two minutes.
I know the transient rental permits will be addressed at tomorrow night's Planning Commission meeting, and I'm here to address the City Council because you are the ones responsible for directing the Planning Commission and you are the ones that decide the city policies they are to follow. The following cities have banned short-term vacation rentals and residential zones. Anaheim, Carmel by the Sea, Carlsbad, Coronado, Dana Point, Hermosa Beach, Huntington Beach, Laguna Beach, Napa, Ojai, Santa Barbara, sections of San Diego, and sections of Lake Tahoe and those, and Santa Monica. And that's just to name a few. As you will note, these are also tourist areas that also rely on tourist revenue. In some communities, they have short-term rentals. In some communities that have short-term rentals, their solution to available housing is just to build more affordable housing. That's not an option here on the island. Here, short-term rentals add to the difficulty of the working class in our community to be able to work and raise their children. And then Joshua Tree in Venice is experiencing, excuse me, is experiencing this at a high rate, at a high rate. Not to mention what it does to the quality of life of your residents. We constantly have to call the sheriffs regarding large parties around us, especially when we have to get up early for work the next morning. We want the tourists to come here and have a good time, just not the expense of those of us who live here full-time. Short-term rentals in the United States have exploded and it is largely unregulated and unsupervised, and our community is no exception to that. I'm going to quote USC Professor Dow Myers of The Priceful Public Policy. If anyone is not familiar with them, you should look them up because they're quite impressive. Professor Myers made a statement regarding what the damage short-term rentals do to the housing market, in quote, "The impact of moving a house from long-term occupancy is a pullman to a demolition. You are subtracting a house from the rental stock. It creates a housing shortage. It only, and it only eliminates available housing, drives up the, it not only eliminates available housing, it drives up the price of the housing that remains available." San Diego approved a cap that is expected to cut short-term rentals in the city by nearly half. Our city restricts the amount of vehicles allowed on the island that gives out short-term rental permits like candy. Why can't our city put a moratorium on short-term rentals? I've seen it done time and time again over the last thirty-two years in the city. As long as our City Council continues on our current path of not enforcing the rules that you have on the books for current transient rental violations and not placing a moratorium on permits, you cannot complain about no housing when you're complicit in the problem. And I just want to say, I applaud you that you're getting more involved because I have spoken at so many, in the last ten years, I've spoken at so many Planning Commission meetings, all to deaf ears. So I applaud you for finally stepping up and trying to address the problem.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind, if you wanted to give that, share that document and they could give it to the Planning Commission members tomorrow.
Can we have one too?
Yeah, I was going to ask for a copy as well, please.
Oh, and coffee for Council.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know what? Leslie, are you talking kind of on the same issue?
That was Mr. Paul. I think it's kind of labored.
Oh, okay. Keep the momentum going.
All right. Paul Burchell, Avalon Library. Yes, the library will be hosting the representative, the representative's representative coming up. One of our staff members is a Spanish speaker, by the way. He's bilingual fluent and has the county certificate, meaning he's allowed to translate.
Oh, good, Alex.
So we'll have that available if required, though of course, people should, you know, for their own benefit, they'll want to bring their own translator if possible. But Alex will be available, so.
Thank you.
I also wanted to promote the concert I have coming up on Friday. It's a family concert with Craig Newton, bless you. Craig Newton, he's going to do a family concert Friday at four o'clock. I believe it's a history of California songs, songs about California. It's going to be kind of awesome. Other programs, our Storytimes continue Saturdays at 11:00 in the morning. Come to the Storytime and then go to the art. We're okay. We can do both. You can do both. I'm working on creating stuff for the August calendar. I know I've got Barnstall Art coming in the middle of August. I also think I'm going to do one other entertaining performer, a magician, or a juggler. I'm not sure. All of these are, of course, courtesy of our Friends of the Library group. Thank you very much. Also, if I may, on behalf of the Friends of the Library, they're planning a book sale at the next art fair, so feel free to donate your books to us. We will take them. And if I don't have them, I'm going to give them to Judy. Judy can take them all. She's got lots of room. I don't. There's also going to be, one of the, the Friends are also hosting a book reading. Oh, should have written it down, but I didn't. It's a book about keeping your pets safe in disaster and bad weather. That's going to be on July 29th, I believe, soon, is that right?
I see.
Yes, there's a flyer. We have the flyer at the library. That's coming up. It's going to be fun. I'd love to do more author talks, so I'm very excited to have it. We're going to try having the science librarians coming in August sometime as well. Also, the usual crafts on Tuesdays and Saturdays. Coming up, let's see, next Friday, we're going to have a little thing on pointillism. So we've got little canvases, little pointillism paint, lots of other crafts. Our summer discovery program is going on. Read three books, do three activities, got a big box of, you know, tchotchkes and some little books to give out. So please, support your local library. We are here for everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Perfect timing. You must have timed that one.
Good evening. Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. First, I want to just say thank you to all of you for your dedication to the community of Avalon. Recently, I sent you an email about some concerns I had, and thank you to those of you who responded. I appreciate your time. So I just want to talk about two things. The first one is trash, and I had a brainstorm and I'm excited about it and I'm sure you've thought about it as well. What if we asked the trash company to make big labels with stickers on them indicating what day that type of trash was picked up? Tuesday's trash day, Friday's recycle day. I think it would make a big difference because residents and visitors are confused and we are seeing, as you well know, piles of trash cans on the sidewalks, overflowing, getting stinky, inviting ravens. Just a simple education process, Tuesday trash or whatever it is, I think we could really make a difference. So please consider that if you haven't already. And then, secondly, I appreciate that you're really moving forward with looking at the vacation rentals in this town. And I agree, we are at a crisis point. And some of the information I emailed you was about the San Juan Islands in Washington State. And the reason that's so important is because they are islands. They speak our language. And they actually did have a successful way of dealing with too many Airbnbs. They did create a moratorium. I know that's contentious. I know it's complicated, but they did it and they created a cap. And as already been said, we have a cap on how many vehicles are here. Why can we not have a cap on how many vacation rentals are here? So thank you for embracing the future of Avalon. Thank you for committing to creating a legacy of this council, finally making a difference in the lives of the people who live here year-round so that we're not just living in a hotel on every street. I appreciate you and thank you for listening.
Great. Thank you, Leslie.
Good evening, Mayor Marshall, members of the City Council and city staff. Selena Luna, Government Relations Manager at Southern California Edison. I wanted to provide an update on a couple of items. First off, on Wednesday, July the 12th, the California Coastal Commission approved on that item. I wanted to thank the City of Avalon for their letter of support on the project and highlighting the unique circumstances here to Avalon and why this project was so important to the island. We truly believe that your letter of support helped bump this item straight to consent calendar, so thank you so much, City of Avalon. I also, as a quick background, you know, to remind everybody, this project is a new source water well, a replacement shoreline fill, upgrades to the existing water storage and distribution system, and upgrades to pre- and post-treatment filtration piping and other systems at the D-Sale plant. Next, Southern California Edison will be hosting two upcoming community meetings next week to highlight the Two Harbors Water Pipeline Project. We invite you to attend these community informational meetings. We will have two meetings on Thursday, July the 27th. The first meeting will be in Two Harbors at 10:30 in the morning at Harbor Refresher Run, followed by a meeting at 6:00 p.m. at the Avalon School. Both meetings are Thursday, July the 27th. And we have mailed background letters to every resident on the island, and we are also mailing individualized invitations to these community meetings. We encourage you to reach out to your friends and family to make sure they know we are hosting these two community meetings. I also wanted to share with you that we have a dedicated website at sce.com/catalina. You click on Learn More About the Catalina Island Pipeline Project to learn more. And also, you can email any questions you have related to that project to the dedicated email address catalinawaterpipeline@se.com. Thank you again, City Council, for your time this evening.
Thank you, Selena. Gosh, everybody must have timed themselves today. It's amazing.
My time starts now. My name is Judy Greer. I am--
Hello, my time starts now. Uh, my name is Judy Greer. I am the president of the Friends of the Library and books are important. Please just leave them on my porch if you're going down to Council Avenue 355. Everyone at my house knows, just bring a book in and I'll figure it out because there isn't enough room at the library for this particular endeavor. I'm also on the board of the, um, Avalon Art Association and of CKV, which is the preschool, the full-time preschool here. Finally, I'm on the board of the hospital. And as some people, I have heard, say these terrible things about the hospital. I'm really, really upset when I hear that because we need a new hospital. We need a good hospital. We need everybody to, you know, be positive about it. And, um, one thing I've heard lately is our CEO makes too much money. Well, let me tell you, it took a year and a half to find a CEO. And this CEO started at the same salary rate that the former one ended at. And that was seven, almost eight years ago. So think in your head, you know, raises and increases and doing things. Also, we tasked a CEO with doing so much. You know, the hospital has improved. Its reputation has improved. We're 99 percentile on the, on the ER all the time. We have now just opened the gym, which should've been opened a year ago, but nothing to do with us. And we have a wonderful PT section now. So if you need physical therapy, that's where to go. If you can't walk on the cobblestones because you trip and are gonna sue the city, stop doing that. Go to the gym and walk on the machines. I mean, really. I'm just saying that I voted for each one of you. And so I'm really, really disturbed when I hear that one of you says something bad about the hospital. Please don't do that. If you can't say something positive, don't say anything at all or at least support the things that some of your constituents support. Some of us are not loud. Some of us are not noisy. Some of us do not complain. We just try to do things to make it better. And so if you'd keep that in your mind, I'd appreciate it. And I know that your job pays so much. I'm really sorry. I'll take up a collection, you know. We're gonna have, you know, Zoom meeting about that. But, uh, you know how hard it is to use your time and to spend your time and to try to improve things and then to hear people tear it down. So keep that in mind and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. Bryce Noel, Chair of Love Catalina, uh, for at least two more days. I did not prepare anything because I didn't get to use my prepared comments last time. Uh, I just wanted to come up here and, uh, offer my gratitude. Um, it's been sort of a roller coaster of a year at Love Catalina, uh, at least sitting in my seat. Um, but, uh, being able to engage with all of you and, and have a dialogue, um, for the first time, um, to me was, uh, it meant a lot to me. Um, and, uh, I've learned a lot and I hope you've all learned a lot. And I just wanted to come up and say thank you.
And I'm sorry I have family in town, so I'm not gonna be able to make it to the installation. Okay.
Mayor Marshall, I have one that we, a comment that we received through Ask.com. It says, "Dear City Council, Mayor, City Manager and City Attorney, I want to thank David and Mary for listening to our concerns about the negative impact short-term rentals have had on, have had on the community of Avalon. Since last October, many of us have shared effective ordinance implementations in other communities, including San Diego and Palm Desert. Per the City of Avalon organizational chart, the residents of Avalon are at the top of that hierarchy. So when you are considering options and solutions, please make sure the residents of Avalon are your highest priority. Right now, there are almost no consequences for violations attached to short-term rental properties and this needs to change. Please consider the following suggestions on ordinances that the city should implement immediately. Any homeowner that has granted or renewed a transient rental license by the city must be required to read and sign an acknowledgement that they understand and agree to the Avalon Municipal Code attached to that license. The property management company, AKA rental responsible party, must respond to a complaint in person within 30 minutes. For the Avalon Municipal Code violations, fines need to be issued. First violation, $1,000. Second violation, $3,000. Third violation, $5,000 and revocation of, of TRL. Prior to occupancy of a rental unit, the operator must comply with the following. Meet and greet renter on site. Verify name, age. Renter should be at least 25 years of age, address and valid government-issued identification. Provide the renter with a copy of the, a good neighborhood brochure. Verify number of occupants for rental. Require renter to acknowledge complaints with Avalon Municipal Code regarding driving golf carts, noise, maximum occupancy. Failure to follow any of these requirements will result in removal from the property. Rental companies currently have renters sign contracts online, but that is not enough. Our community is small enough that in-person communications with a renter is necessary. Anything less than that is insufficient. In addition to the city looking at oversaturation, owners of rental properties need to be accountable. A TRL is a contract between the city and homeowner. The requirements and obligations attached to the transient rental license and criteria for the revocation of that license should be communicated to the owner on an annual basis. Thank you for your time. Kate Redden, 95, Playa Azul."
Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to the consent calendar.
Mayor, uh, first item on the consent calendar is approval of the minutes from the June 20th, 2023 regular council, regular city council meeting and June 27th, 2023 special city council meeting. Approve, uh, warrants, total expenditures for June 12th, 2023 through July 7th, 2023 totaling $2,966,307.09. Findings to continue to hold remote teleconference virtual city council meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. Item four, adopt a resolution appointing Mayor Marshall as the voting delegate and Mayor Pro temp Michael Ponce as an alternate delegate voting for the annual League of California Cities Conference in September 2023. Um, adopt a resolution declaring vehicles and equipment listed in the resolution as surplus property and authorize the city manager to dispose of it in accordance with city policy. Item six, authorize the city manager or designate a procure per the city's purchasing policy a used 2016 Ford F-250 pickup truck from United Rentals for the wastewater treatment plant and allocate $28,500 from the vehicle replacement fund account number 13825-6781 to procure the vehicle. And item seven, approve the City of Avalon electronic signature policy as provided. And finally, item number eight, authorize the city manager to execute a seventh amendment extending the franchise agreement with Avalon Mooring and Diving Service, Inc. for an additional five years from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2028.
Gosh, well, the real meat of this thing is only gonna take three minutes.
I'll move to approve items one through eight.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro temp Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Well, excellent. Okay. If there's any emails, I will say goodnight to Tony and mean as a janitor.